Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out in the rain and join us for our council meeting. At this time, would you please join us and stand for the pledge of allegiance or remain standing for the invocation?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Yellen?
Please bow your heads. Lord, we ask for your wisdom as we make some tough decisions this evening. Help us to carefully consider the relevant information that's been gathered. May those sharing information give us pertinent points so we all clearly understand. We ask that you would work with us tonight and cause us to have a productive meeting. Lead each of us so that we can make fruitful contributions and enable us to think and strategize in ways that will achieve great results. Finally, help us be unified in making the best possible decision for our citizens and effectively carrying them out. Amen.
I'd like to call to order our July 18th, 2024 council meeting. We'll begin with consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any changes, additions?
Mr. Mayor, we need to add an executive session for real estate and litigation.
Okay. Real estate and litigation. Okay. Any additional changes or motions?
If there are no changes or questions, I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close name. All members voted for the motion. We're honored to have a couple of guests and visitors with us this evening. Our first will be a presentation of the update on the Parks Recreation Master Plan, Mr. Keith Rodenhauser with Bren Stetter Carroll. Welcome. Happy to have you here.
Thank you. Happy to be here. It's been a great process. It's been about nine months, I think, now that we've been working with Canton so far. And Adam and Nathan have been great to work with. It's really been a great project so far and happy to be here today to tell you about it. So start off a little bit why we're here, why you do a plan like this in the first place. Primarily, it's to come up with a vision for the future. What does the community need for the next 10 years with regard to parks and recreation? Make sure the department is aligned with those community needs and address any gaps in services. Is what you're offering what the community wants and what they need moving into the future? Prepare to respond to population growth. Your community's been rapidly growing and you have to respond to that. Also, look into the funding requirements. Everything that's going to come out of this plan is going to cost some money. How can you pay for it? And then if you're thinking about how to pay for it, you have to have a plan in place to make sure you're making responsible decisions with those funds and resources. And finally, you don't have to do everything, so you want to make sure that you're looking at partnerships to avoid duplication of services. Quickly, why did you choose us? We've done this before. We've done over 100 plans like this, so we're very familiar with this type of process. To help us, though, we need a steering committee. That's a group of residents and city officials and staff members who help guide us through the process because they really represent the community. We had four meetings. All were about two hours. In fact, the last one was this afternoon. And they provide critical information and context for the community that we, as outsiders, don't know. They also help promote engagement opportunities to make sure the community knows what's happening and especially things like the survey and engagement and open house opportunities. And then they helped us come up with that vision for the future, what that looks like. And then ultimately make sure that this is your plan. We prepared the plan, but it's, this is Canton's plan, your community's plan. We use a four-phase process. The first phase evaluates where we look at what you have, your community, what that looks like, your system. And then the engage phase where we talk to the public to find out what do they want, what do they need? And then vision for the future, what does that look like? And ultimately, the plan, the recommendations, how do we make that happen? So a little bit on what we learned from the data when we looked at that about your community. Your community is relatively young. Some were surprised to learn that. The median age is 35.2, which is younger than both the county and the state and actually the US as a whole on average. But you've got a fairly rapidly growing population that's expected to continue. You do have a growing number of seniors. Despite that lower population, that group is still growing, smaller than a lot of your neighbors. You also have a good number of children in the community, likely because of that growth and you keep getting additional households. The community is also becoming more diverse. As part of this, we looked at your parks and see the condition they are today and some things that we noticed, for example, wayfinding. Some of your parks can be difficult to find, especially heritage parks, a little tiny sign on the way in. And even when you get in the parks, finding your place from one spot in the park to the other amenities you might want to use can be somewhat difficult sometimes. There's ADA deficiencies in most of your parks, including some of the newer development. There's some outdated amenities that need to be replaced. And but more importantly, you have opportunities for improvement. There's lots of land in your system that could be used to add more amenities for the Looking at benchmarking, this is a comparison to, I think it was 47 other agencies in either Georgia or nearby states. We get the data from NRPA Park Metrics. They collect over 1,000 agencies throughout the country. You get a whole different amount of data from them that we then pile into this information here. One thing we found was that looking at acres of population, you're doing pretty well. You're relatively close to that benchmark. But when you look at some of the other numbers, operating costs, staff, for example, you're much lower. And a lot of that is because you don't, you don't offer much in the way of programming and you don't have facilities that would require a high level of staffing, like a recreation center or a pool or something like that. And your lower level of overall development of the parks talks about having some potential for additional improvement without having necessarily to acquire new property. Your, if you look at the capital expenditures there, you can see they're a little high. But there's a lot of items in the capital, parks capital budget that aren't included in some of the other agencies. Trail development, for example, acquisitions. You've also been really investing on improving what you have to catch up with that population growth. As you can see, looking at the level of facilities on a population basis there at the bottom, you're a little bit lower than, on most of those metrics, showing that there's already room to grow on some of those facilities and that doesn't even account for the potential population growth going into the next 10 years or so. Another element of the analysis was looking at where the parks and the facilities are located in the city. So we mapped out a 10-minute walking distance and a five- and 10-minute drive to different types of parks and a whole bunch of different types of park amenities, including some that are only offered by some of your partner groups or other agencies. And then we compiled all those layers together to make this map you see up there where the green areas show the highest level of service, so they have the most amenities in parks nearby, can walk to a bunch of different facilities. And the red is a lower level of amenities and a lot of those are in newer developed areas that do, though, have some HOA facilities that they can access. And those were included in this analysis, but only at a walking distance. Because once you get into the driving distance, you start to include areas outside of those neighborhoods and can't use those facilities. So another step of the process was to take some data about community needs based on social characteristics. We get data from CDC, Social Vulnerability Index. That should use a whole 15 different demographic categories to find out which areas of the community are most in need of services in general. And then we combined that with that level of service map, come up with this priority investment areas that we call, was where you'll get the most bang for your buck, so to say, so to speak, where there's low levels of service for parks and a high level of need for services in general. The darker red there, the areas most, highest in need. And that's just where your investment today would go the farthest. The most important part of the process is, of course, talking to the community and finding out what their needs are. As part of this process, we had a number of different engagement opportunities. We had a statistically valid random sample survey that was sent to probably 2,000 households to try to get 400 responses. We got, we got that. And the purpose of this survey is to try to get an accurate representation of the public. So what is the overall needs of the community on a statistically valid basis? So hopefully, this survey tells us what the needs of the community are and hopefully we reach all different population groups. The second survey we had was an online survey and the purpose of that is to engage anybody who wants to be involved. So the people who are most likely to fill that survey out are those who already are using your parks, those are engaged in any events you have, and really, those who are most interested in parks and recreation opportunities. And both of those surveys provide good information from different groups that can tell us a lot. Another opportunity we had was the open house and the two events we did in Cannon Park. The open house didn't have as good of attendance as we would have hoped, but those two events in Cannon Park, we talked to over 300 people there. And once we go out there and talk to the people, they really wanted to tell us, hey, you know, we'd like to see a splash pad or whatever else when it's, it's not, it's harder to get them to come to us. We also met with a series of stakeholder groups, various groups that use your parks, provide, partner groups that provide programming and so on, to find out what their needs are and what they think the community is going to need over the next 10 years or so. What did we find? Trails and connectivity. People want more trails and connectivity. You've been doing a lot of that and people are still interested in more. Probably if it came back 10 years from now, you'll probably hear the same thing. People want opportunities to walk or bike or get around the community without necessarily having to drive. Nature access and access to the river, whether that's trails or fishing or kayak access. You have, you have a river in the community that people would like to have more engagement with that river. Some facilities and new facilities that you might want, dog park, which I know you're working on now. Stage to have more, more programs, more events, more concerts. Quaddocks of some sort, whether that's pool or splash pads that people can cool off hot days in the summer. And pickleball. Sure, most of you have heard of pickleball, the fastest-growing sport in America, and there's, there's a lot of demand for that in Canton and everywhere in the community. A lot of your homeowners associations do have pickleball courts, but there aren't any in a, in a city park. New neighborhood parks to meet the needs of some growing communities and parts of the city that don't currently have good access to facilities. And support features, these are features that people don't, they don't go to the park for these facilities, but they help them enjoy their experience while they're there and stay longer. So restrooms, seating areas, shade to get out of the sun and so on. Indoor space for programs and activities, rentals, some public art, and then signage and wayfinding so make people can find what's out there and both to the parks and within the parks as well. On the operation side, people would like to see more festivals, concerts, movies and so on. These are, these are programs you already offer, but people would, would love to see more. I don't know that you'll ever get to the point where they say it's enough because they love, they love these, these opportunities. Nature programs, opportunities to get out, out there and interact with nature. Age 50-plus programs, that's a big group throughout the country for older adults, don't like to be called seniors. So these programs should be, probably be targeted to groups with, with projects called active adults or something like that because people don't, people don't respond as well to senior programs, especially younger people in that age group. Some additional adult programs, most of what is available now is mostly for, but that doesn't mean there isn't more demand for youth programs, especially sports as those populations grow. And then cultural and performing arts. And then a really important thing to think about is the marketing and promotion. If, if the community doesn't know what you're offering, it doesn't exist to them. And if you add any new opportunities, it's very important to market them and make sure they're aware of them. You can also help promote some of your partner groups as well so that they can meet the needs even necessarily, not necessarily adding anything at all. The strategic plan, this is kind of the vision for the future, mission, vision, values, goals and objectives for parks and recreation. The mission that the steering committee came up with through, throughout this process is provide outstanding parks that promote wellness and play. And then a vision, Canton Parks provide exceptional experiences that connect the entire community to nature and play. And we have four values, community, connectivity, nature and service. They kind of tie in to the tenants of the city. We even use the same logos there, the same icons. And then we have four goals, the variety of spaces and facilities, improve community access to wellness and health opportunities, improve community connectivity and engagement, and excellent operations and leadership. Each of these goals have a series of objectives and each of those objectives will have a series of actions or strategies to meet that objective and ultimately realize this Onto some of the recommendations coming out of this, this plan. Continue to develop those trails and connectivity to park schools and commercial areas so people can get around on their bikes or walk, or walking or whatever. There's a lot of continuing opportunities for more of those trails, even on land you already have. Restore and upgrade the Tippin's Gym that you recently acquired as a recreation center. You can offer some indoor programming opportunities there. Acquire land for some of the facilities you currently can't fit in your parks, such as new athletic fields. Develop new neighborhood parks in some communities that don't currently have access. And then when you're doing that, have master plans that say, to talk to the community and find out what do they want. Include them in the process. And then improve access to the river. People want more opportunities to kayak or fish or even just sit and enjoy being near the water. Some facility improvements, an amphitheater. An amphitheater downtown would allow you to have, a permanent amphitheater downtown would allow you to have more of those concerts and performances that people want. A splash pad, some sort of aquatic opportunity so people can cool down and have fun. That was one of the things we heard the most when we actually went out to the, to the public and talked to people. Pickleball courts at a city park. More inclusive playgrounds. I know that you have a playground now in development at South Canton Park that is to be fully inclusive. That's a great start. Picnic shelters for shade, but also rental opportunities, gatherings. Improve ADA access throughout the parks. Improve that wayfinding, as I mentioned before. Coordinate with public arts committee to add some, potentially add some public art throughout the parks and trails. And then add and improve those, those support features so that people can stay at the parks longer and enjoy their experience more. Restroom shade, picnic shelters, seating areas, drinking fountains, even parking. Sometimes people, if people can't find a place to park, then they might not go to the park. Looking at programs, create or find partnerships to add some of the programs that people wanted that are not currently offered, such as arts and crafts or adult sports, nature programs, summer camps, fitness, performing arts and so on. Continue to offer those high-quality festivals and special events. People love those now. Just continue and build on that as you can and as you have more opportunities and more locations potentially have them. Utilize any facilities and spaces that you add to the system for programs and events. And then potentially add a staff member to manage and organize some of those programs that currently aren't offered. And then finally, promote what you have, what you have now and anything that you add to the system, as well as your, your partner opportunities. Looking at some of the operations, develop an ADA transition plan and make sure you're making the parks accessible to all. Improve marketing and outreach, increase exposure to the department and any opportunities they have, invite them to participate. Consider the staffing needs of anything you add to the system, whether that's parks, facilities, programs, so on. Somebody's going to have to manage it. Have consistent contracts with all partner groups. That way you know what to expect, they know what to expect from you. Look for additional alternative funding streams. There's grants out there. A park foundation would allow you to accept donations, sponsorships, so on. And then support staff development so that they can learn more about their fields and they can bring that back and provide better services to the public. This page here, I think you all were provided this example. This is a one-page summary of the findings of the plan overall. There's the mission, the vision, there's a section on what we learned from the public engagement, there's the goals and objectives, there's the values, and then there's the recommendations, the high-level recommendations of what to do to accomplish this vision. This serves as a, as a really simple version of the plan that you can digest in, in five minutes, see really, really what we learned. So now, what's next? In the next few weeks, you'll receive a draft of the entire master plan. And then, once you have that, we will be coming back to you. And in about a month, what was the meeting, 15? Second meeting in August, and I will be here to answer any questions you have after looking at that document. And then after that, we'll be back to ask you to, to adopt the final plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rodenhauser. We appreciate your report, appreciate all the good work. Your team's done and all of our residents and businesses and stakeholders who participated in the creation of this plan. So we're very proud of our parks and green spaces and we look forward to any opportunity to further align their offerings with what our citizens want to achieve our tentative roadmap of, of connecting citizens to parks and recreation. So it's exciting, it's always exciting to go back to our citizens and find out what they like and what they want more of. So we appreciate it. Are there any questions for Mr. Rodenhauser at this time?
I have one real quick.
Yes, absolutely.
On page six, the benchmarking.
Yes.
I noticed we're kind of behind on everything but the, the multipurpose fields.
And even there, all of your fields are at, well, they're not permanent fields. So that sort of makes it look like you're better off than you really are.
So I was, that's, I guess heritage and bowling are a lot of multipurpose fields that are.
Heritage, dead of a river or kind of, and then bowling right now is not even available to use.
Right. So that's not even counting bowling.
Yeah, exactly. There's definitely need for more, no question there.
Great. Anything else?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. It was really, really robust and full of information, so thank you for that. You did mention, on page 15, or excuse me, slide number 15, to add a dedicated staff to plan and deliver programs for people of all ages. And you mentioned in the presentation, high-level staffing. Are you, are we talking executive director kind of level or, you know, I'm thinking kind of an air traffic controller that would?
It's a programming staff, so they would essentially either hire existing outside groups to provide programs or hire people to teach those programs or host those programs themselves. It's just one staff member that would probably report to Adam.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. We look forward to your future presentation and the final adoption of the plan.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Staying on the topic of well-being, community well-being, we're honored to have our next guest and visitor, Mr. Billy Hayes, CEO of Northside Cherokee Hospital, to give us an update on their development projects and all the great work they're doing for our community. Welcome, Mr. Hayes. Always a pleasure having you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here this afternoon to give everybody an update on what's going on at your, our hospital. Most of you probably are aware, we moved there in May of 2017. At that point, we had a 10-year plan as to what we thought we needed to do to meet the community needs for the next 10 years. We completed that plan in a little over four years. So the growth has just been tremendous with what we've seen. And so we realized now about a year and a half ago that we need to come up with another 10-year plan. And so we completed that probably about six or eight months ago. And so what we've got now is a plan in place of which some is underway now, some is under construction, which I'll update you on that, and then kind of what we see happening in the next probably five to seven years. So currently, we have three projects under, under, one under construction, which is a new parking deck that y'all have spoken about, I know. And so what that parking deck is going to do is it's right adjacent to the women's center. What it's going to do is allow us to do two things. One, we realized once COVID was over with and people started coming back and visiting their family members, that we had a parking issue. Hopefully, none of you have had to be at the hospital, but if you have, you may have had trouble finding a park, a place to park. So this deck is going to do two things. It's going to solve that current parking issue that we have and it's going to support the power that we're in the process of designing now that will bring to, you know, this, bring to you, Mayor, and the rest of the city council members when we're ready to start designing, what we're designing, but get ready to, to start construction and work on. So that's going to be a little over 14, around 1,400 parking places with that. And again, it'll support both of those projects. The other thing that we've got, which I know that y'all have discussed also, is as we've gotten so busy on the campus with traffic coming on and off of the campus, we see it backing up, traffic backing up on the campus, traffic backing up on the Northside Cherokee Boulevard, and it's just creating some problems for us. And so we need to have another entrance into the hospital. So one of the things we're going to do is construct a second entrance, which is probably about 300 yards. If you came off of campus and turned right on the Northside Cherokee Boulevard, you'd go about 300 yards and there'll be a traffic light and another entrance, four-lane entrance and those kind of things, very similar to what we have now. It won't have that, the one now is the, is the main entrance, so you won't see the same rock and decoration and stuff. It'll be a very nice entrance with a traffic light to help with people coming off and on and off the campus. It's intended more to have more service, more ambulance and have those type vehicles go in there, but it'll be really, for anybody that wants to use it, you know, can use that. And the third thing, and we built, if you've been on there, been on the campus, you know, our helipad's a little distance from the emergency department. When we moved there in 17, we were doing probably three, four, maybe five at most transports in or out of the hospital via helicopter a month. Now then, we're probably four times, five times that. And so as we continue to expand programs, we're seeing more and more air transport coming in to our campus, some going out, but a lot more coming in. So we need to move our helipad, so that's going to be where the road's going to connect in. So what the new service road would do was connect in where the helipad currently isn't come down about where the current deck is also. And so that'll give us two exit points off the campus, but three to get, three points to get to any of these exits coming on and off the campus. We will move the helipad once we decide, we're going to need some more operating rooms that's going to support our new tower. So let me go to the, the tower. So the thing we're doing now is designing two things. One is another medical office building. If you come up on the campus on the right, there's current overflow parking that we put in place and there's construction trailers that have been there really since 2017 with all the projects we've had going on. And so with that, we're going to put a medical office building there as the design. The thought would be somewhere probably 125,000 to 150,000 feet and we'll need a parking deck to support that. For us, we like parking to be 5,000 to 1,000, so if it's 150,000 square foot, that'd be 750 places that would need there. And then we'd evaluate any other parking that we may need that would utilize that. So you'd probably be looking somewhere around another 750 spot parking deck that we'll be coming back to you and asking for. I would say probably in the next six months, maybe this year or early next year. So that's going to take, and again, the MOB is under design. We're basically finished with that. We're getting ready to, you know, submit to the state, submit to the city, the things that we want to do and need to do there. So we hope to start construction sometime next year on that. That'll take us about 18 months to build, so sometime in 2026, probably fall, late fall, maybe early winter 2026, that building should be complete. We're designing the tower. If you remember, if you were here in 2017, we opened it with six floors and that's what our design is now. We'd open it with six floors, very similar to what we had then. If you're very familiar with the campus, there's a service road that goes around. The women's center, if you're facing the hospital, is to the right. The tower's in the middle and what we refer to as our critical care side, which has our ER, ORs and ICUs and all that's to the left. And so the tower will run parallel with the women's center and that road that circled that goes around the hospital will go, the tower will run really right up that road. If you've gotten off of one of our guest elevators and there's a common area there, that's where you'll, when you get off, you'll be looking down the hallway to the new tower that's being built. We'll open up again with six floors. That'll allow, that'll allow us to add probably about 100 beds to start, but we'll add probably 34 beds. Currently, we have 40 beds per floor. We have 10 floors built out, which is as tall as we can go. We can't go any higher with the current tower that it is, so that's the reason we're building another one. So we'll add probably 34 beds, so we'll have 74 beds per floor at that point. And so when, when we open up this first six, it'll be somewhere around 100 beds and then 34 beds times four, what, that's about 136 more, 140, something like that. So when it's built out, we'll be somewhere around 240, 250 beds. Today, if you go to the state website, we Today, if you go to the state website, we have three hundred and thirty-two beds. They don't count observation beds, we have observation beds too. So, we're north of three hundred and seventy beds, so you put another two hundred and forty, let's say, on top of that, you can see you're north of six hundred beds. For those of you that's been here a while, you may note, the old campus, we had eighty-four beds. So, to see the growth that's happened and where the campus is going is just remarkable. When I started, I've been here now twenty years, believe it or not, some of you probably were like, wow, it seemed like a hundred, but it's really only been twenty years. You know, when I started, we had less than three hundred staff members and members on our medical staff. Today, we've got almost four thousand employees, we've got over eighteen hundred on our medical staff. And I think as we add this, and just with the first phases that I just talked about to build out, I think we're going to need probably five hundred or so more employees, we'll probably need at least another hundred physicians just to open up this first phase that I talked about. So, then, as you add, you can count on close to seventy-five to a hundred employees per floor. So, every floor we build after that, it'll be another seventy-five to a hundred jobs just at the hospital. That doesn't include our outpatient strategy and include the physicians and the outreach that we have with that. There's a lot going on. We're very blessed to live in a wonderful community, great community here in Canton and Cherokee County, and we all see that, know that, love that. As I tell people when we're recruiting, especially physicians and leadership folks, in the sky's the limit here when we have such a wonderful community to live in and have the access to health care. You look at your parts and rates, we want to do the same thing you're doing. We want to take it, make sure we're meeting the needs of our communities, so we're constantly evaluating, you know, what do we need to do to do that? My boss asked me, said, well, Billy, it took you four and a half years, you know, to build out the first ten-year plan, how long do you think it's going to take on this one? I don't think we'll do it in four and a half years, but I do think that within the next five to seven years, you'll probably see that built out probably to the ten floors. If things go according to plan now, we should open up the new tower, we think sometime in late 2027, maybe January, February 2028. So, a lot going on there. I just want to thank each one of you for your support. It's been tremendous to see, we appreciate that so much. We want to be an asset to, not only the city of Canton, but all the surrounding communities and counties that we serve. The growth, as I said, has just been phenomenal, and we're truly blessed to be here. And again, I want to appreciate, thank you, each one of you for your support, what you've done for us. I'll be glad to answer any question any of you may have about the hospital and what's going on there.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes, we appreciate the updates, and you're always welcome here to come and share your plans, your vision, your progress. It is hard to believe how far you've come in such, so few years. Those of us who can remember the old hospital, if ever had the fortune or misfortune to go there due to health reasons, but your progress has just been incredible. We appreciate all that you're doing to enhance the health and well-being in our community. We're proud of the facility and excited about the future plans. It's quite impressive, and we welcome and appreciate the partnership and working with us there. So, any questions for Mr. Hayes at the moment? Yeah, Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Hayes, you mentioned four thousand employees now?
Yes, sir, approximately, yes, sir, four thousand.
So, that's pretty significant. Is it safe to say that that is, or Northside Hospital is the, maybe the number-one employer in the county?
I think the school district, if you look at the number of employees, is the largest. If you look at payroll, our payroll may be a little larger, but if you look at the number of employees the school district is, then it would be us, yes, sir.
Imagine Northside's top two, top three.
We have a lot of employees, we do well, we're very fortunate, we have a great organization.
And considered with the growth, you mentioned, you had eighty-four twenty years ago, and you're looking at another hundred jobs in the next, next two, three years?
Well, I think we'll need, we had eighty-four beds at the old campus. We were at three hundred and thirty-two, again, on the website, we're really all over three hundred and seventy, I think it's three hundred and seventy-six, because we don't, they don't count, the state doesn't count observation beds, which for us is the same thing, but that's just how they count it. If you're asking us a question, number of employees, I think we'll need, I think we'll need at least five hundred when we open up this first phase, and probably at least another hundred on medical staff, because with a hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and fifty thousand square foot building, we'll be expanding services, bringing in new physicians for that. So, I think between those two, that's what we'll need to start.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And then, the hundred that I mentioned was as we open a new floor, it'll be additional seventy-five to a hundred jobs. Then, it'll be four more floors to come.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We certainly appreciate the skilled jobs that you're adding to, to the community as well. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Hayes, thank you for that presentation. Quick question, you did mention five hundred employees and additional hundred or so in Phase Two, but you also mentioned four hundred potential parking spots. So, I'm just trying to do some quick math, so a third of those are going to go to employees. Is fourteen hundred really enough?
Fourteen hundred would not be enough for all of that. Fourteen hundred will for the tower in our current. We're going to build another one that's seven hundred and fifty roughly, that'll support the medical office building and additional staff. And it may need to be bigger, we'll evaluate that as we continue to move forward, but right now, we think that's the right number.
Thank you.
So, that would be, you know, fourteen, and roughly twenty-one hundred, twenty-two hundred total.
Anything else? Thank you, sir, appreciate your time.
Have a good evening.
You too. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is the public hearing and possible action on 2024 millage rate. And to set us up for that, is Ms. Forrester our finance director?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is our third and final required public hearing. If the city was to adopt a millage rate above the rollback rate, per the state's documentation required reporting, the rollback rate is calculated at five point two eight seven mils. Staff is recommending five point four mils. And this is just a brief graphic showing property taxes as a percentage of the city's total income. Any changes to property taxes would influence and affect other sources of revenue. These are the advertisements that are run in the paper and dictated by the Georgia Department of Revenue. This is the twenty-year history of Canton's millage rate. We're asking for an eighth year at five point four mils. This is the data that will be reflected in the next graph. We just wanted to make it available as public record that we're looking at the other cities and the county when comparing our millage rates, inclusive of the fire tax rate. And for the city of Woodstock, they also have a part bond. So, this is the graphic display of the data that was on the previous slide. The city of Canton is the black line at the bottom, towards the bottom of the page. And you can see, we've tried to maintain low tax rates. When it's necessary, we've had to increase it, but we're comfortable at the five point four mils that we can function as a city at the lowest possible rate. This is a breakdown of how an individual's property tax bill is spent prior to any exemptions. So, you'll see that the school district consumes sixty-three percent of a property tax bill. The county's approximately eighteen percent, and the city of Canton would represent approximately nineteen percent of a property tax payment annually. The city's services that are paid by that nineteen percent include police, fire, and I'll explain that fire, we do not have a city of Canton Fire Department, but the city pays the county for those fire services on behalf of our citizens. The city also provides building inspections, code compliance, planning and zoning, tourism activities and events, road maintenance, park maintenance, theater programs, municipal court, communications, and administrative services. This is a larger picture of the advertisement that you've seen in the newspaper with the current year, the 2024 millage rate, which is the city's fiscal twenty-five year on the right-hand column, and per required advertisements, if we maintain the five point four millage rate, this would be approximately six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar increase in tax revenue to the city. That increase is split between inflation on existing properties and new construction. The total digest increased approximately six point five three percent. This is a history, again, just a short snippet of Canton's five point four millage rate and the recommended five point four for the current year, 2024, with this county's fire rate. And you'll see, the county did approve on Tuesday the two point eight 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 mils, and that little inflection point from last year at two point seven six four to the current year, that's going to cost the city just over three hundred thousand dollars. These calculations are based on a fair market value property, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a home that is lived in by the owner-occupant. The top, the green graphic, shows the calculation of taxes at the five point four mils, and that bill would come to nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. The bottom graphic shows what that property tax bill would be at the rollback rate of five point two eight seven, which is nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. So, that is a difference of twenty dollars and thirty-four cents between recommended five point four and the rollback of five point two eight seven. Here, two calculations based on the same property for a owner-occupied home with a senior exemption. Same value, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, the senior paying the five point four mil will pay three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents to the city of Canton. The bottom calculation is based on that rollback rate of the five point two eight seven mils. That same senior would pay three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. That's a difference between the rollback and the recommended five point four to a senior of seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. This is the number of properties currently receiving the senior exemption. You'll see for 2024, that's three thousand three hundred and thirty-two. It grows by a couple hundred every year, which is great, we're attracting seniors. And you'll see that the total value of the senior exemption dollars that seniors are saving in this year, at 2024, is at one point nine million dollars. Flip side of that coin is that the city has to come up with one point nine million dollars from other revenue sources. As I mentioned, this is the last meeting. We're hoping that you'll choose a millage rate and make an official adoption tonight, but we can continue this process as long as necessary. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Forrester. At this point, we will open our public hearing for public comment. We have three members signed up to speak. When I call your name, if you please come forward to the podium, state your name, address clearly into the microphone, and speak clearly into the microphone so everyone can hear you. And we'll begin with Mr. Bob Stellic.
It's Bob Stellic, I live at 310 Tupelo Trail. Good evening.
Evening.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Mr. Peppers. My questions are probably from Ms. Forrester more than anything else. I noticed she said that it's forty percent of the fair market value of the house, but my latest bill shows it at closer to fifty-nine percent. So, I'm not sure why there's a discrepancy there. I also noticed that the city's taxes are higher than the county's MNO taxes. So, I'm not really sure, and that's a very small slide, is this online, is this something that we could look at? I'd appreciate that, because I don't understand, you had a small amount for property taxes, but I wasn't sure where the other revenues were coming from, and I don't know where the money's going, is the big part. Is there a chart also that shows where the revenue, our budget goes every year? Okay, that's the part that surprises me the most about this, is why my property tax is so high. And there's a couple of things. I noticed that the home state exemption applies to my house, and then there's a fair market value to it, and then there's this net taxable value, but that's gone up considerably. Of course, tax assessor has raised the value of my house eighteen percent this year, twenty-one percent last year, and twenty-two percent the year before, and I think we're all feeling that impact that's hurting us. But the fact that the city tax is higher than the county's MNO is surprising to me. I don't know why that is, I'm curious why that is. And the five point four is good, but you know, to say that's the same, we have more people, we increased the population, so keeping five point four, and I think the state says that when you keep the millage rate the same, that's still an increase because the population is growing. So, the five point four is good, and then the other point I wanted to bring out or try to find out is the property tax that homeowners like myself pay, and I'll add this little caveat that the Tribune has noted that city of Canton now has more apartment renters than they do homeowners. So, we have this large pool of apartment owners. Now, the apartment complex owners have to pay a property tax on their property. Is that equitable to what I have to pay? You know, if there's a hundred people on this piece of property, and I'm paying eight hundred dollars, are they paying eighty thousand dollars? Is that apartment complex paying the same amount, or do they have exclusions? And maybe we could generate more revenue, and I don't know if we have that ability to raise the property tax on these apartment owners. That's something I'd like you to look into as well. And again, I'd like to know where the money's going, so as soon as that's published, I'd love to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for recognizing me to speak. In approbation of the comments that I submitted to council last week, I would just say that the Cherokee County Board of Commissioners made their choice. I know it's uncomfortable, they raised their fire MNO. I would just invite you to all consider rising to the challenge of those added expenditures. I know it's not comfortable. I don't know how the city can continue to do that in the future without either raising the military or reducing other expenditures for in-house services, because I do believe that the continued reliance on reserves, that might be an available ability to do so now, but I don't think that's sustainable long-term. I think that those funds will run out in short order, and it'll create even harder decisions down the road. I would invite the council to consider, though, that I listened attentively to what the fire chief said, and a lot of things that he did say leveraged significant merit, and I would argue that the two point eight 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 Cherokee County Board of Commissioners did for the fire MNO is noteworthy, especially for here inside the city limits. I noticed that in his fire packet materials that his team distributed along with the comments that he made during his, that of the four fire trucks that they purchased, two were actually stationed inside the city limits here for fire stations that are geographically located here. And for the battalion, the Crown Jewel Apparatus, which is the ladder truck, is still currently housed at the old South Canton Fire Department, and it remains there. And we, based on what the hospital director said, Mr. Hayes, not Mr. Hayes, we're going to have the tallest single building anywhere in the county, I believe, ten stories. So, I think that it makes good sense for us to continue to find ways to invest in our fire department to keep them, to get them the funds that they need so they can provide the services that we know that we're all going to benefit from as we continue to move forward. I just would hope that even though the reserves might be able to meet the challenge today, that council gets very creative in the future if council's desire is to continue to maintain that five point four millage rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Chris Everett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. My name's Chris Everett, I live at 133 Hidden Trail Court in Canton. And I'm here asking council to give serious consideration to rolling back the tax rate, which is within your purview to do, and take revenue down to what it was last year. Why do I say that? Well, the reason I say my, you're increasing my taxes this year is because the state says so. As reported in the Cherokee Tribune, under state law, if a local government keeps the same millage rate but brings in more revenue than the prior year due to higher property values, it's a tax increase. You guys won't even stand up and say you're increasing your citizens' taxes. You blame it on the tax assessor. The tax assessor, under state law, assesses the property under the guidelines the state gives it. It's just straight, plain, and simple. They don't set taxes. You guys set taxes through the millage rate. The way the system was designed to work is as property values go up, the municipality lowers the millage rate to keep the revenue basically for what the city needs. What you guys have been doing over the last seven years is taking in more and more money and spending more and more. As the gentleman asked, where's this money going? Because from your exhibit, from 2019, you took in five point, call it five point nine million dollars. This year, you're projecting to bring in eleven point six. That's a ninety seven percent increase. Who can keep up with that rate of growth? It's unsustainable. And yet, we're still planning more projects that are going to cost more money for the city. And then you're going to raise taxes and say you're not, then you're going to contend you're not raising taxes. It's the tax assessor. And round and round she goes. Now, in a previous meeting, the, the city manager stated that we, the city has seven months worth of reserves. At a run rate of about $2 million a month, that's 14 million, the city's. If you release a million, only a million, to lower of unrestricted reserves into the general fund, you could, if I did the math right, you could set a millage rate of 4.935. That's even lower than the rollback. And it only costs you a million bucks in reserves that you're not spending anyhow. Why are you sitting on the money? I would like to see the city council seriously consider rolling back your rate as required, well, as the state would require. And what's this mean to me personally? When I moved into Canton, my first tax bill was $267 and eighty four cents. That was in 2020. In 2023, it was 674.35. That's a hundred and fifty one percent increase. A hundred and fifty one percent. And I'm supposed to take that and just say, oh, well? I don't care how small the money of the increase is. It's still an increase. At least have the intellectual honesty to tell the citizens you're increasing their taxes. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. At this point, we will close the hearing and open up to council discussion. Mr. Peppers, would you like to kick us off with updates? I know the county did adopt their millage rate and their MNO and fire tax and.
That's, that's correct, sir. Just a, a couple of notes from some of the comments tonight. I did pull up last year's tax bills for two of the apartment complexes, just, just to give you information. The Crest at Laurel Canyon paid a little over $800,000 in total property taxes last year, of which 151,200 came to the city of Canton. Legends at Laurel Canyon had about a $99,000 tax bill to the city of Canton last year. So that just gives you an example on the apartment complexes and their tax bills to the city. Additionally, those complexes are not applicable for any homestead exemption, so they're at the full tax rate of the city. There was a question about reserves. The city of Canton does have about seven months in reserves. Of that, about $10 million came in in a one-time fund from the American Rescue Plan and has been earmarked for capital projects by the city. Those projects haven't taken place yet, but that $10 million will go down out of the reserve fund, which leaves the city with a reserve fund of a little over, right around three months. Our auditors have suggested, in every report to the mayor and council, that a comfortable fund balance of, of unrestricted funds is between two and four months of, of revenues. And so if you take out those funds that are pledged towards capital projects, that's exactly where we are. There was a, an, a note that I believe circulated among the council that mentioned the county commission specifically talking about the importance of returning excess reserves to residents. And it was, it was very interesting this year because they didn't really do that. They actually raised their in operations and on the fire tax, even though they said that they plan to use reserves. Tonight, of course, you will have an opportunity to set the city's tax rate. But the thing that, the thing that I try to remember is that $640,000 roughly that the city will see in increased revenue, seventy percent of that is from new developed, new homes. Those new homeowners will still need the same level of police service. They will still need the same level of street service. They will still utilize our parks, and there will be a level of service related to that. Really, the only piece of that $640,000 that is based upon inflation and assessment is thirty percent of the number. And as you know, that thirty percent of the number is less than what our increase in fire taxes will be in the coming year. Another thing about reserves that's important to note is reserves don't come from property taxes. That may be just a portion. As the slide that, that Ms. Forrester showed that shows the breakdown on revenue stream for the city, if the idea is that you want to take excess funds at the end of the year and return it to those individuals that paid those, then those funds would be returned to Georgia Power, who pays franchise fees to the city. And it could be returned to Comcast, who also pays franchise fees to the city that make up a large portion of our revenues. It could be sent back to the state or federal government where we've received grant funds and are holding those as projects are underway. Insurance premium taxes, that would go back to the Georgia Department of Revenue. Alcohol beverage taxes, so the individuals who bought a drink at a restaurant should get their refund based upon us having excess funding at the end of the year. You know, the bottom line that I look at is you get to make the decision on millage rate, and we make the budget work. So that's up, that's up to you. If in the past, what the city has relied upon is the fact that we still provide the lowest millage rate. So if you go back to the slide that shows the comparison, the chart, please, the next slide. So the green line that's up there represents Cherokee County unincorporated residents, MNO, plus the fire tax. Because if you live in the unincorporated area, you pay that MNO and fire tax. That MNO in the unincorporated area is what provides public safety for you. That pays the sheriff's salary. That pays for roads. That pays for parks, the same services that you receive in the city. The other lines up there representing Woodstock, Ball Ground, and Holly Springs also include their fire taxes in with it. Woodstock, of course, provides their own fire service. Last year, Woodstock decided to roll their taxes back, and they actually dipped a little bit below us. What's interesting is they also got a bond referendum approved by the voters to do parks and recreation projects and have raised their millage rate accordingly for that bond. Plus, they've raised their maintenance and operations millage rate above what it was last year. So their residents are also seeing a tax increase in millage rate. The only city so far that has rolled back its millage rate has been the city of Ball Ground, and Ball Ground had a 25% increase in its total digest based upon new construction. And almost all of theirs was new construction. We don't list the city of Waleska up there, and part of the reason why we don't list the city of Waleska up there is they don't really provide. So, you know, I, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. We have received a couple of emails that I've responded to today from residents, basically form emails with questions. I cannot necessarily speak to Mr. Stellic's tax bill. I'd have to look at that. But the tax bills, of course, are generated by the Tax Commissioner's Office, so if there's a calculation function that's not working on that, we'll need to take that up with the tax commissioner as those bills go out. But I'll be happy to look at that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. We appreciate that additional detail and, and clarification. It certainly helps a lot. There's a lot of nuances involved, and a lot of factors the city does not control. One thing we do control is our millage rate. I'll go on record as saying I'm extremely proud that we've been able to hold our millage rate at, steady at five point four for the past seven years. And I'd be proud if we held it steady again for the upcoming year. We have had tremendous growth, which comes, you know, additional services for that new construction, as Mr. Peppers mentioned. We have invested heavily in, in having the best police department and public safety services offered to our citizens at the lowest possible cost. We heard a presentation, not a master plan. It came directly from the wishes and desires from our taxpayers stating the, the huge preference for new parks and recreational services. We continue to increase amenities and services to our cities, and the goal is always to deliver the highest poss- possible quality services at the lowest possible cost to our citizens. I believe we have done that progressively, even through the pandemic and when other cities suffered some major revenue losses. Again, I, I want to applaud this council, former councils, the former mayor for their fiscal responsiveness throughout. So I'm proud of the work that we do, and I'm proud that we are still and would still be the lowest millage rate of any other city in the county by far, and one of the lowest in the states. Again, when you take out the fire services that we contract with Cherokee County Fire, we are operating the city on, on a very, just a little over two mils, which is really kind of unprecedented. All this, you know, as our costs continue to increase, inflation certainly impacts the city and the services we provide. We're looking at a salary study that will show us needing to compensate our incredible staff in a competitive way. So we've done a lot of things, as Mr. Peppers called out on, on the revenues, that 10 million of those revenue, uh, reserves are in there and earmarked to capital projects. I'm proud, again, this is the last meeting. You don't have to go ba- back very far to a time when the city had no reserves. And we all saw in 2020 what can happen when things cha- change. And to have those reserves in place to, to cover our expenses in case, in, in case of a calamity or another pandemic, a recession, all those things, it is just being good stewards of taxpayers' money and, and, you know, sound fiscal management for the city. So I certainly agree with the staff's recommendation to hold steady at five point four. I'd be proud to do so and continue the work that our citizens have come to expect of us and of this council and of this city as we continue to move Canton forward and ensure the highest possible quality of life and the best services at the lowest cost. So that's all. I will get off my soapbox now. Any additional questions from Mr. Peppers, Ms., Ms. Forrester, or any other comments or motions?
I'll, I'll do a quick.
Okay.
Go ahead. On, on the property tax, that, that's a tough one. I mean, it's, it's kind of, I don't want to call it a double-edged sword, but the growth and the economy has been so good over the last few years, especially here in Canton. I just looked at some of tax bills from the difference between 2002 and 2003 for just certain areas in the city. I just kind of picked random, random houses, random people, just, I didn't know who they were. But I, I've saw increases from 2002 to 2003, as much as 104%, 91%, 200%. And now, these are just values because, you know, if somebody's house was valued at $200,000, well, then they get it assessed. It goes up to $600,000. That's a big, huge difference, and that's a large tax bill for not only the citizens of Canton, but also, you know, citizens in Cherokee County alone. So I understand from the seniors, you got a, you're on a set budget, you know, whether it's social security or a pension. But I also hear a lot from the young people, from people my age and younger, who, you know, bought a house because it was a good deal, because we had, went through this great recession, and they picked up a house for $200,000, and they've lived in it, but now their, their value is $600,000. Well, for a, a young couple or just anybody that's on a budget, that's a, that's a huge increase on their tax bill, and it's hard to pay. So I completely understand from everybody's aspect of, 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 you know, the taxes going up. Also, there's been a few instances where from 2002 to 2003, that, that their tax bills have gone down. I mean, 10%, 11.94%. Again, I'm just picking random people. So I always encourage people to appeal your property taxes, and, and everybody has that ability to do that. The other thing about this is, is when you have your house and your value is, you know, from 200,000 to 600,000, you've got a large asset, and you can be proud of that large asset. But if anybody was here during the Great Recession and you saw the values plummet, and these young couples that had a $500,000 house but got a line of credit on that house for $300,000, but then they got in financial trouble, and all of a sudden, they can't sell their house and pay off their line of credit, then they're, they're, you know, that's when you saw a lot of people lose their homes. So, I mean, I guess my, that's my comment. My question, Mr. Peppers, is if we roll the millage rate back and we, you know, save everybody some money, and we show we're trying to be, you know, do a little bit better on our budgeting, but then next year, we have another crisis or an issue, or God forbid, a natural disaster or something, and we see these, these values go down, and then this time next year, when we're having to address it, we're going to have to raise the millage rate, maybe raise it even more. And then, you know, I think people are going to be extremely upset. So, you know, I see everybody's points. I see how it looks, you know, that the taxes are being raised. But again, your asset, your, your number one asset is your home, and you, you know, that, that is, that should be everybody's, you know, major asset that they take care of, that you can use. You can sell it, you can downgrade. You know, it's just something, you can get lines of credit, you can build your pools, you know, you can help your family members out. So it's a tough one. And, and, you know, it's truly just a comment that I was making. But, but again, if, if we roll it back, you know, and I know you can't predict the future, but I would be concerned that if something did happen and we were going to need funds in the future, does that mean we have to raise it and raise it at a more substantial rate and then have everybody really mad?
So, so a, a couple of comments there, and I should have mentioned this earlier because I think the question came up. The city of Canton and cities in Georgia do not have the ability to tax non-homestead properties at a different tax rate than they charge commercial properties, which is what we put apartments at. All properties have to be charged by the city at the same tax rate. So when you roll back taxes, you're not only rolling back the taxes on the resident, you're rolling back the taxes on every parcel in, in the city, including the commercial parcels, parcels that are owned by individuals outside of the city, rental homes, commercial strip centers, all of that's included in that particular rollback. Cherokee County this year's, their MNO is 5.153. You have to go back to 2021 because they've rolled their taxes back before you get, so they're, they're basically going back to a rate they had almost three years ago. What, what that shows me is that they also understand that the cost of operations is more than they can roll back. The increase that, for example, if you look at your personal electricity bill over the last two years and compare that bill to 2020, for example, you're going to see some and compare that bill to 2020, for example, you're going to see some major increases in there. Multiply that by many times because not only is the city paying that bill for facilities, but we also pay the bill on all the streetlights in the city and in the neighborhoods. Woodstock, for example, their total tax rate now at 6.206, you have to go back to 2020 because they've rolled back the last three or four years. They're back to their 2020 level on taxes, basically. So those communities that are around us that provide services, and I'm not saying that Holly Springs and Ball Ground don't provide the same level of services, but those are much smaller communities and the level of service they provide is at a different level. For us to remain competitive in the services that we provide, you may be able to do a decrease this year. If you did the rollback and as Ms. Forrester mentioned, on the average home with a senior tax exemption, that senior's going to see a $7 decrease. But if you follow the examples of Cherokee County and Woodstock and what they've seen this year and what we could see, you'll note that next year you may be asking for an increase to pull another $20 out of that home. I can't predict the future and that's kind of the game that we have to play every year in the millage rate is we set a rate to adopt a budget that we're going to use for the next year and every year you get to pick a rate. What council has historically done since 2017 has said, we're going to stick with the same rate, but we're also going to use fund balance. Every year since 2017, the city has balanced its budget using reserves so that we don't have to raise our property taxes above 5.4 mills. So our current budget this year that we're in in 2024 is built on using almost a million dollars of fund balance. If we had not used that fund balance, our millage rate wouldn't be 5.4. It would be 5.83. So we're already doing some of what Mr. Everett was asking, which is to utilize our reserves to lower taxes because we're not charging what we would need without using that fund balance on an annual basis. If there's a recession, fund balance starts dipping. You know, what we try to do is we try to budget based upon the projects that our citizens have asked you to do. We try to pay for as many of those projects as we can without utilizing property taxes. The property tax bill for our residents is not enough on its own just to pay for police and fire. It takes all of those other sources that were in that pie just to pay the city's bill for police and fire service. And those are, in my opinion, those are the two services that residents seek the most from their local government.
Thank you, Mr. Pepper. Thank you, Mr. Roach, for your comments. I think, again, we can't predict the future, but I think if you look at the chart as to what would stop dip below us last year than where they're happening to go this year, I think it's a pretty good indication of what could happen there. So I think holding steady. I mentioned this before. I haven't tonight, but, you know, 5.4 is the lowest in the county, but it's also, Mr. Ingram, I've done this several years now. We've gone back as far as we can in the city's records. It's the lowest millage rate in the city's 185-year history. So again, I think holding steady at 5.4 is an excellent accomplishment. Mr. Johnson?
A couple of comments. Can we go to slide number 32? It's the one with the big dollar bill up there. As I've talked to a few residents over the last couple of months, I don't know about you guys, but something stands out to me and it's glaring. And it's not the county. It's not the city and I'm not pointing fingers here. But it seems as though when folks get their property tax bill, we have 19% of the pie, but we're getting 90% of the blame. So my question to the community of those folks is the same things that are being asked of the city and the county. We got to find to do the same thing on the school side. I had a resident currently where I reside and talking about, and again, our seniors, and I tried to think of this from the standpoint of the senior that's on a fixed income. I talked to an 89-year-old lady this morning who receives $1,300 a month in social security income. So I asked her, I said, well, hey, if we were to roll this back and it saves you 20 bucks, how much does that affect you in your day-to-day life? And for somebody making 1,300 bucks a month, 20 bucks is a big deal. But here's the other problem that we're having. We're also starting to hear from the folks that aren't receiving the exemption. And some of those folks, like Mr. Roach had mentioned, he and I and folks that are under the age group, tax bills are going through the roof. And I'll just use myself for an example. 2017, my tax bill was 3,200 bucks. Well, when I got it, just like you guys did, it was $7,560 something dollars. And again, I have children in school, so although my family couldn't afford to absorb that sort of increase, I do recognize and understand that there are some families that cannot. But here was my concern also with Mr. Roach. If we roll that millage rate back, what sort of long-term consequences in terms of a shortfall? If we back out the $10 million in the ARPA funds, what is the makeup of those reserves and how much, how many months would we have?
We might finish the budget year closer to four months in reserve. So, you know, that basically means that if you did the rollback and you had to additionally eat the fire, you're talking about a million dollars roughly. So that takes you down to three and a half months of reserve somewhere in that ballpark.
Thank you.
Mr. Yellen?
Two things. We've talked about the DARPA funds and they were earmarked for capital projects. If I'm understanding correctly, they were earmarked by law. They were, we were told you cannot just spend them however you want. They had to be done for capital projects.
There was language in the American Rescue Plan Act that required that those funds be used for certain things. When the city received its revenues, we had a period of time that we had to record those funds for a particular... By the end of 2024, we have to have a use for every dollar that we received. There was a secondary ruling that came out that allowed governments of a certain size to go ahead and claim 10 million of those dollars that could be used for anything. But at the time, council decided to earmark those funds for major maintenance and renovation projects at City Hall, Public Safety, Public Works, and the Theater. Those are projects that would have had to have come from property taxes in future years.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to mention, the mayor kind of alluded to this. I can remember back when the prior mayor came into office, they had no reserve. And then 2008 happened and they wound up having to lay off half the staff. And city services, in a lot of ways, ground to a halt. So it's, that shows you how vitally important it is to keep enough reserves to at least keep everything operating if something totally unexpected happens or even something that you could predict, but you don't know when it's going to happen. So I just wanted to throw that out there that there is a reason that we are really strong on keeping the reserve where we need it to be to keep us in operation.
Thank you, Mr. Yellen. Anything else? Ms. McGrew?
Yes. Mr. Peppers, thank you for all the information you've given us and Mr. Ingram and Ms. Forrester, thank you so much. I was reminded of where our fund balance comes from and you mentioned grants and fees and permits and that reassured me a great deal that it wasn't all property taxes. Can you tell me approximately ballpark, I know this is off the cuff, approximately what the city spends a month to operate or a year to operate? Just a ballpark.
We spend close to $2 million a month on operations. So, you know, that's going to put you at about $24 million a year.
Thank you. And we seniors enjoy the tax exemption. How much does that save the seniors?
This year it's a little over 1.9 million.
And make that up through people under 62?
It gets made up from all funds. I mean, the one thing that I try to stress with residents when I have a conversation with them about tax bills is that, and this is a good slide to have on up here. If you did not live in the city limits of Canton, over half of what you see in Canton's portion of the dollar would still remain with you. If you lived in an incorporated Cherokee County, you would still be paying another 9.5% more than those first two sections just for fire service. Our fire services are calculated based on the fair market value of the home after state-recognized exemptions. And what that means is, I had an example earlier today. I had a resident that emailed me. I believe her, I won't name names, but I believe her value last year, her home was valued at $625,500. She received a senior exemption. Her total tax bill was $2,673.34. Of that total tax bill, 73% of that went to the county and the school district. The remaining 27% was paid to the city as city portion of taxes, which was $746.93. Based upon that value of her home, the city paid on behalf of that home $686.36 in fire taxes back to the county, which meant the remaining balance for that homeowner was $60.57 or 17 cents a day that was used to offset the cost of streets, parks, police, code enforcement, and all the other services that are listed up there. The more valuable our seniors' homes, our senior homes get, the more money we pay on their behalf of our services.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, one last question. Mr. Peppers, per Ms. McGrew's question, that $2 million a month, who does the bulk of that, those funds support?
Well, so we spend roughly $7 million a year on fire service and about the same for police service. So that's 14 million out of the 24 million right there. And then the rest of it goes to other services such as the building department. So that's a perfect example by state law, what we bring in in revenue from building permits. We're required by law to have expenditures that match that those permits pay for. So I have to spend as much money as I bring in in building permits, plan review fees, technology fees related to that on building and safety services throughout the city. Community development's in there, park, streets, road maintenance. That's another big part of the budget on Public Works. The $24 million is, a little over half of that goes towards public safety alone. And then the rest of it is basically divided up among streets, parks, and other general government services.
Thank you.
I think the question was also raised about where does the money go? We haven't adopted a millage rate tonight, but once we do, the budget, next year's budget will be based on that millage rate, how much money we do collect. Unlike the federal government, we by law have to have a balanced budget, which we always do. And, but our budget is posted online so anyone can see clearly today like where your money's going. We're very transparent about that. Ms. Forrester gives a report every month, sometimes more than once a month as to our budget, where we're standing and what we're collecting, how we're spending the money. So you'll always know where the money is going. The process is very transparent. We appreciate hearing from all citizens. No one likes paying taxes, myself included, but it comes down to dollar and cents. Again, I want to thank Mr. Peppers and the team for, you know, providing that detail of, at the end of the day, where the money goes. Even our senior exemption, that we increased those homesteads, households by around 200 households a year. Again, we are paying, the city has to pay for those fire services for those senior exempt properties. And we're proud to be able to continue to offer that and still maintain a 5.4 millage rate steadily here for the past seven years. So I think at the end of the day, it's quite an accomplishment. And again, the goal is always to have the lowest taxes possible and the best, highest quality possible services. So. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Waterman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve setting the 2024 millage rate for the city of Canton at 5.4 mills. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Waterman and Mr. Tolan for the second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We'll move into our business meeting now. Are you having your pack at the council draft meetings, minutes from our July 11th meeting? Are there any revisions or additions to those minutes or motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the minutes from July 11th as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Do we have any announcements this evening? Not, we'll move into our 10-minute public input, which we have every meeting. And this is a 10-minute total input. I'll ask Mr. Peppers just as time is to keep us on course here. We have four members signed up to speak this evening. So again, if you please come forward, state your name, address clearly into the microphone. And we'll begin with Mr. Joe Monna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, I want to talk a little bit about senior citizen economics here. And I'm not sure, I am a retired senior citizen, no longer work. I don't know if many people in the room fit that category. Probably not too many. So, you know, I received my tax bill from the county and of course, the county went up, received it from the, you know, saw the city portion of it. And the city portion went up 36%, $241. So then I went and did a little math on how much more money I would get in cost of living increase, you know, coming up in social security. I estimate it's going to be 2.6%. So that'll pay for about 20% of the increase. And I become, you know, 80% of that, you know, I become poorer. And I guess, yeah, I understand the millage rate being constant. That's great that you've cut to constant. But where you make your money obviously is by increasing property rates, property values. That's where the money comes in. And, you know, we bought our house back in 2006 and I've seen, I don't recall ever seeing it go down, you know, but it stayed pretty constant for a while because of the, you know, the housing crash. But then, you know, it's been creeping up ever since. This is probably the biggest I've ever seen it go up. And I think everybody I've talked to says about the same thing. Property taxes are particularly onerous tax because, I'll draw an appropriate analogy. I have a stock portfolio. Say if I had it for a million bucks, it doubles in value in over one year. And so the government, federal government comes and taxes me for the additional million dollars that went up even though I haven't cashed it in. See, most senior citizens aren't going to sell their house. So you get the extra money, but I get no value because I'm not going to sell my house, you know, probably won't sell my house ever, you know. And the majority of senior citizens who are out here probably are in the same boat. They're not going to sell their house, you know. So the increased value doesn't mean no good. It only does the taxing authority good. So I would ask you to consider... So, so I would ask you to consider that, you know, maybe try to adopt some measures, particularly for senior citizen of limited income, you know. Again, there's some that are a lot worse off than I am. But, you know, senior citizens, like Mr. Johnson said, you know, the $20 really mattered to that lady. You know, maybe that would be more for me, but it's also going to matter to me because I can spend that, you know, on other things that I really need. So please consider that. And in my particular section, the Great Sky, I've probably watched 40 houses go up in the last three years. Maybe 30, but I think it's about 40. Okay, each one of those houses, not many of them are senior citizens. And each one of them are of a value such that, that you're going to pull in $6,000, $7,000, similar to what Mr. Johnson said. Probably similar to what he's paying, you know. So you multiply that by the 40 houses, that's a lot of revenue. So my question is, with all the additional growth and the additional revenue coming in, you know, don't think you have to spend that money. You don't have to spend it. You can put it aside because, you know, you know, I spent 10 years in Washington, so I'm real familiar with federal, how federal things work in federal bureaucracies. The single largest line item in our budget is interest on the national debt. That balloon's going to pop. And if you don't think that that's going to cascade down on the city, you know, the county of Cherokee and the city of Canton, it's going to cascade down on us. And somebody was talking about laying off people and what have you. It could be pretty, pretty serious. So really, thinking, it's great to have more parks, great to have higher additional employees to do this. You might want to think about just putting a freeze because there are some times coming ahead. I guarantee you, there are times coming up where, you know, where things are going to get pretty bad from a, you know, from a economic perspective because the federal government cannot continue to sustain what they're doing. They just can't, you know. I mean, think about that. Wrap your head around interest on the national debt is ahead of Medicare and it's ahead of defense right now. I mean, and you don't think that's going to pop? You know, you don't think something's going to happen really bad that's going to affect us? So please, don't think about spending the money you're bringing in. You're bringing in additional revenue because we're growing. Think about freezing it, you know, think about putting the money aside, please. Because, you know, you don't want to be caught in, in the fire, you know, and find out that you didn't advance plan for, you know, some potentially very onerous circumstance that might come up. So I offer those comments.
Thank you, Ms. Monna. Mr. Bob Stella?
Second.
Thank you.
I'm going to be real quick. Obviously, I have to now. A quick question, the reserves, which is really good that we have such a high reserves. Do we earn interest on that reserves? I didn't see it shown in the pod. We do. That could be a considerable amount of money. It'd be nice to put that in as, as revenue. Also, I heard a bond, a bond issue Woodstock was doing for Parks and Recreation. Could we do the same? Instead of taking it out of the budget, just have an issue of bond for Parks and Recreation to cover the expenses there? And the 5.4 is great. You're doing a great job. As the previous gentleman mentioned, your revenue's increasing thanks to our tax assessors. And we're blaming him, but, or them, but it's really the state who's mandating these higher values. These higher values, still at 5.4, means you got a lot more money to spend. The purpose of government is really simple, and I think we all know this. We learned this back in school. I don't know if they learn it today, but we learned it back in, that the government, whether it's the city, the county, the state, or even the federal level, is to protect its citizens, protected of its freedoms that we have. And then I think that's the important purpose of, as you look at your budget and what you're doing and where you're assigning dollars, is to assign them for the protection freedoms of your residents. I think we all realize what's gone on the last three years. Inflation, you know, spiked at 9%. So you've also got the cover of inflation that we're all seeing, you know. Okay, for me, it's milk and bread and gasoline, but you've got fire trucks and police cars that take gasoline. And that's, that's a big cost that you have to have. The county, County Commissioner Johnston mentioned something about a referendum that they're trying to, they're going to try to limit the increases to the CPI next year. And I'm not sure if that's on property values or tax increases, but that's something that maybe that should be considered. And finally, I just challenge you, I think like the previous gentleman did, you know, you've got, it's a tough task with inflation and everything else that's going on. I challenge you to look at the dollars, look at what we have to spend and think about not just the old people, the young people, you know. Okay, we're lucky now, thanks to the vote of the referendum, 98% voted for this referendum. But you guys are paying tremendous amount. And again, we're looking at 19 and 18% for the MNO, for the county and the city, the school. That school tax is the part that you're getting ripped on. I mean, that's, but nobody shows up at those meetings. And I don't know if any one of you complained. I was kind of hoping with this new superintendent that she would take the initiative and lower it. I mean, you know, $15,000 per student is what they're spending, you know, 10.5 students per teacher. You know, they, they just have gone, a billion dollars is their budget, you know, considering the construction. You know, $600 million is their operating expenses. So, I mean, maybe we should focus our efforts, and particularly the, those under 62 who have to pay that lion's share, that 63% or whatever it is, to taxes for the schools. That's a lot of money. I mean, you know, kids are important, and we have to make sure they have the best education. I feel sorry for you. That's a lot of money, particularly seven grand. Oh, man. Wow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stella. Mr. Gordy Fallman?
Hello, Gordy Fallman. My wife Holly and I own the Holler Canton right here at 301 West Main Street. We appreciate the opportunity to present to the city council and the mayor an issue that we've come across here recently. We built the Holler and opened almost a year ago. We're coming up on our one-year anniversary. We built a fairly unique property with lots of outdoor space. We basically are a bar restaurant. We have a shipping container that's a kitchen. We have a beer garden area that's astroturfed. And it's a really unique space where we have, you know, we can watch sports, and we also have lots of live music. We've, we have live music primarily on the weekends, but we offer live music as well during the week. And really, since we've opened, we've had an issue with one particular neighbor who has complained about music and the noise level of our music, really since we opened. And it's just come to a head here over the last month and a half or so as we have been issued citations. We have to go to court on August 21st to deal with those citations. The issue is not that we're playing music outside of designated times that we're allowed to play. We're allowed to have music according to the code until 11:00 PM. The issue is, is that the neighbor and the way that the code is written, basically, if he decides that the music's too loud and he calls the police, and the police, I think it's, he's called a number of times and, and, you know, they basically told him, look, they're not playing music outside of the, the time limit. But over time, he continues to call, and I think the police, the, when they issued the citation, just said, look, we, we have no choice here. The only way to solve this is, is to issue a citation and, you know, you deal with the city and, and deal with the, the legal system here based on the rules of the code. So we wanted to come and present that, that case today that, you know, we think we've built a unique venue, we've built a unique business, we've appreciated the city's support and the community's support. I, I think inside of the central business district, we need to look at the rules and understand that, you know, there will be noise until a certain time in areas where we have, you know, restaurants and potentially taverns and bars that will play music and even maybe listen to ball games, et cetera. So the detrimental thing that we've had to deal with since the citations is we've had to cancel live music, which is hurting our revenue pretty significantly. When we don't have live music, you know, our revenue shrinks by 35 to 50%. You know, the first night that we got the violation, we had an open mic night, and we literally were having, you know, we doubled our revenue that night over the previous Thursday night. So it's pretty significant. You know, we rely on having bands that bring in large crowds. We can accommodate a, a, a large audience. And so, you know, we're, we're trying to find a way to resolve this as quickly as possible. We have our one-year anniversary coming up, and we literally can't have music to celebrate our one year because we cannot, I don't even know how much the violation or the citations are going to cost us. So, you know, we wanted to get this in front of the city, see if there's some way that we can resolve this. Again, we, we rarely play music. It rarely lasts past 9:30. And, you know, we're, we're trying to find a reasonable accommodation between us and, and the neighbor. I also want to thank Mr. Waterman, who recommended that I come speak to the city council. He's, he's been open to hearing our situation, and we appreciate his efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Fallman. Appreciate you. We have one more speaker signed up. You heard, the buzzer went off. I assume everyone's okay, but continuing now. Ms. McGrew?
I'd like to make a motion to extend speaking for two and a half minutes.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is approved. And that leaves Mr. Thomas Weaver.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at 131 Old Maryetta Road here in Canton, Georgia. I'd like to thank council member McGrew and others for extending the public comment portion of our agenda this evening. Thank you for recognizing me to speak, council, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me also. Mr. Mayor, members of council, an approbation of remarks that was submitted by council in response to some of the concerns that were addressed during the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda regarding the adoption of the millage rate that council has suspended. I would like to share that, as council is aware, Section 2-1 of House Bill 581, Public Act 379 of 2024 proposes to create a new Georgia Code section, which is 48-5-44 Subpart 2, that, as the other speaker alluded to, should House resolution, I believe it is 1022, be enacted by the electorate at the ballot box for the November general election, would cap to CPI the inflation portion of the tax assessor's assessments for each property parcel if that should be the will of the voters that's going to be presented to them. As you know, constitutional amendments do not require gubernatorial consideration. They go straight to the voter. However, my concern in regards to that proposed newly-minted code section, should it be ratified into law by the voters through the constitutional amendment, includes an opt-out clause that would allow local governmental units such as the city to opt out of the CPI restriction and would allow the continued use of the inflation index in addition to the millage, which the measure would otherwise prohibit. Because that's a discretionary opt-out, my challenge to the city of Canton, I believe it was a remark that was made by another member, is that if that were to come to pass, would the council, and I suppose submitting it to council today is kind of like our city manager's share. We don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what the future holds. But if the voters do indeed approve that, would the mayor and council be willing to consider passing a formal resolution and going public with the consideration that council would not opt out of that and would allow that CPI index inflation restriction to continue to remain in effect here in the city and continue that strong fiscal conservative even hand at the table? It would be my hope that, that if that measure were to come to pass, that the city would not opt out of the CPI index inflation restriction that the measure seeks to create. I know that's like a mouthful. It's like drinking water through a water hose. But long story short, I just would hope that that would be something that the mayor and council would be amenable towards if that should be the will of the voters to further help control those tax assessment increases that I think would be a small baby step in the right direction to help keep that bill as low as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Concludes our public input, our 12 and a half minute public input, plus or minus. We had a very productive meeting last week, discussed a lot of things, a lot of different issues. We appeared to have consensus on those issues, so we have numerous items on our consent agenda tonight. I will read those. And as always, if there's any one item that anyone would like to remove for further discussion, we will do so. Item A, approval of resolution to establish a standard cable and video franchise fee of 5%. Item B, approval of the Ward of Task Order 6, Addendum 1, for supplemental services for Brown Industrial Booster Pump and Waterline to Blacken Beach in the amount of $39,716. Item C, approval of the Ward of Task Order 9, Addendum 1, for supplemental services for State Route 20, I-575 Water Main Replacement to Blacken Beach in the amount of $27,103. Item D, approval of the proposal to provide wall foundation investigation for the River Mill Pedestrian Bridge at the Mill on Edwah from Heath and Lineback in the amount of $26,200. Item E, approval of the Ward of Task Order 7 for Reinhardt College Parkway Utility Relocation, State Route 5 Connector at Highway 140 Intersection Improvement Project to Keck and Wood in the amount of $43,750. Item F, approval of intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County for the maintenance of Technology Ridge Parkway Phase 1. And Item G, approval of request by Northside Hospital Cherokee for city contributions to construction of a new traffic signal at the hospital. Would anyone like any of those items removed for further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Roach.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for a motion. We have no old business to attend to tonight. We have two items of new business this evening. Both items are for information purposes only, so there'll be no discussion. These are for upcoming cases at our August 1st meeting. Item A, staff report on Case MPA 2404-010, request to remove the requirement of a water tank within the Laurel Canyon Development. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This request is to eliminate the requirement of a water tower that was conditioned to be built at the Laurel Canyon subdivision. The applicant would like to have this item removed and two houses built in the little cul-de-sac where the tank was supposed to go. As you noted, this will be on the August 1st agenda as a public hearing. Subsequent to the staff report being done, we have received a revised letter of intent from the applicant's attorney. Also, after posting the sign on the property, I did receive a phone call from a concerned resident today. Not a phone call, but an email. She and I have gone back and forth today. There you have a house closing coming up on that little roundabout, and she is concerned about the water tower, I believe, being actually constructed there. So I anticipate an email from her expressing her support for this request. And of course, that will be forwarded to you or any other comments that we may receive between now and the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And Item B, again, this is for information only for the upcoming public hearing on August 1st. Staff report on annexation ANNX 2403-001, rezoning RZ 0N 2403-002, master plan MP 2405-005, and conditional use permit CUP 2404-002, request submitted by P Ridge Land Investments LLC.
All right. This application, or applications, as you stated, contains an annexation request for, by my calculations, just a little over 60 acres. They will have a total area of 70 acres. They are looking to construct, what is that? 196 single-family detached homes, 32 townhomes, and a small retail center that would front off of Reservoir Drive. This application, again, will come before you on August 1st as a public hearing. So far, with the signs being posted, I have not received any phone calls. The applicant has The applicant has not yet met with the Board of Education to see what donations may be required or asked of by the Board of Education for any impacts that this development may cause on the school system. And like I said, to date, I've not received any comments from anyone for or against this. I kind of expect to get numerous ones from the Great Sky community once they notice the, the public hearing signs that have been placed out on the edge of the road of Reservoir Drive. And of course, the staff comments will be included in the staff report. I'm still waiting on those to come back from different departments, and they will be forwarded to you, of course, with the next agenda cover sheet.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Appreciate your reports. Mr. Peppers?
A few items just to update you on tonight. We will begin probably next week with the next phase of paving projects that are being done by, by our joint partnership with the county. Those paving projects will be in the old Mill Village just north of Riverstone, and our hope is to have those done with that contractor before the start of school. Tippins Elementary School, the former Tippins building, has been completely demolished by the contractor, so that is, that portion of the project's done. They still have some work to do on site up there, getting the site prepped, erosion control and things like that. Earlier this week, we had a water main break on Scott Mill Road, happened in the afternoon. Our partners with H two O Innovations were out working through the night, got it repaired, and about two hours after they got everything finished, got everything off-site, ended up with another leak just further up the road. So, our crews from the Police Department, Public Works, along with H two O worked very hard, along with our utility department, to, to get that repaired on Tuesday. We had great communication with the residents on that street. In fact, our utility department went out, took water to all the residents, had such a great impact on the residents out there that they turned around and bought biscuits for the crew that was doing the repair work out there. So, it was really good, it was a really good thing for everybody involved. I got to lift a shovel with some of my friends from the Police Department and from Public Works to try to get mud out of Marietta Road late on Monday night, but everything is back in place over there. We haven't done a permanent pave on that section. We do have it gravelled, and there's some signage out there. We need to let the gravel settle a little bit before we can do additional work in particular. I was asked to provide an update on a few projects, and in fact, last evening, Mr. Toll and Mr. Roach and I had an opportunity to speak in Hickory Bluff, so some of this is a regurgitation of what we spoke to those residents about, but I was asked to give an update on some of the site development that's going on in Riverstone in the area near Martin Luther King. There are two projects in that particular pod that were approved by council back in twenty twenty-one. That includes Avanta, which is a residential project of twenty-eight point three acres, and Crystal Lagoon, which is a project of twenty-two acres that includes condominiums. Avanta is currently working on their project. That is the land that is closest to Martin Luther King and on Riverstone Boulevard there. That is a total unit count of two hundred and seventy units. They are in the land disturbance phase and getting all of their stormwater in at this time. Crystal Lagoon has not submitted any plans for the continuation of their project. It is entitled, about a year and a half ago, there was a meeting between that developer and city staff to look at a site plan, and we have not heard from them since that particular So, those two projects are going on. At your last meeting, you approved the abandonment of an easement that we used to have out there. There will be another medical office building that will be built between the self-storage on Reinhardt College Parkway and the apartments on Reinhardt College Parkway. Those three projects basically fill out that entire pod of Riverstone. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers, for the updates. Any questions for Mr. Peppers?
Thank you.
Moving on, we do have one council-introduced item this evening. It's discussion of noise concerns and enforcement in the central business district. Mayor Protem Waterman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Mr. Fallman spoke during the ten-minute public input. I spoke with him previously about his, the citations that he's received regarding noise at the Holler, and I looked up the ordinance, and I found it to be confusing myself. I think it was maybe last updated in, is it twenty, or two thousand and two, correct? But it's very vague when nuisance is discussed. I've looked up similar noise control ordinances in Alpharetta, for example, Roswell, and they have more, more details in terms of time, time bound, or even decibel levels, where this just, ours seem to be very, it's wide open and vague. I think there's, we could, should have some discussion on, some discussion on, on providing more details to that ordinance, because I could just imagine that as businesses come to Canton, that may be of similar, similar style to the Holler, that they too would probably, would probably be in the same situation. So, I think it's a good idea to have that conversation now and possibly come to some sort of update to, to the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Waterman. I certainly agree, we've done a great job of updating majority of our ordinances, and this sounds like one that may have been overlooked in the process, if it is over two decades old, I think it's certainly time to review that. It predates a lot of the development downtown and restoration, and the, certainly predates the entertainment district, which has an impact on that area as that continues to grow and expand, and we have restaurants now on East Main Street, and I can imagine possibly more in the, in the future. I think it's certainly important that we have an ordinance that is very specific and is not left to subjectivity or interpretation by, by our officers or, or business itself. So, certainly be in favor of us relooking at that ordinance and strengthening it and holding whatever public hearing we need to have so everyone's, you know, in, in agreement and understands ordinance and how we're going to move forward. Mr. Johnson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I did have one question. In regards to those citations, since the ordinance is vague, if you would, is there anything we could do in terms of the actual citation itself for those business owners?
Mr. Dyer?
That's, that's up to the court.
Mr. Peppers, is that, we're talking about a single ordinance here, do we, I don't know if we need to appoint a committee to do that, or is that something staff can take a look at with Mr. Dyer, maybe bring back some recommendations and?
If you would like, we can try to bring back maybe a draft of some options to you at the first meeting in August for your discussion. I would suggest that, you know, since this is a, since this would be a change to an ordinance that might impact a number of property owners, you might want to schedule a public hearing or an opportunity for public input once it's drafted.
Definitely. I, I think in talking to Mr. Fallman, I think, I know myself and other residents, we seem to have that magical hour of eleven o'clock as the, the time when there should be, there should be no noise, but that's not what's laid out in the, in the ordinance, and again, it, it is vague, so something that will make, I don't know if it's going, it's possible, but something that will make residents as well as business owners somewhat happy or accepting, accepting of it, so.
The actual prohibition, I don't think it's vague. It's just, it says, if you can hear fifty feet from the building, that's pretty objective, but that's what you've got to think about. It's the central business district. As you've expanded those uses, there's still some residential properties that are close by, so they're just, it needs to be changed. I mean, if you're going to have the kind of businesses like the Holler, something's got to change about it.
Definitely. I mean, it's over two decades old, so it's pretty, and, you know, I don't think it's, going forward, it's not just the residential properties that are there, but we're looking at additional residential infill, so it's certainly something we need to, to get our grasp on now, and we'll look forward to those recommendations to the next meeting and try to move that forward as, as quickly as possible.
Mr. Mayor, one comment or question for Mr. Peppers? Would it be possible to poll some other cities? I mean, to, to Mr. Waterman's point relative to Alpharetta and Roswell, maybe we could expand that out to metro Atlanta, the cities that have CBDs and entertainment districts just to kind of get a, you know, a good idea of what other folks are doing and what they've done relative to ordinance, noise ordinances in particular?
We can. One particular issue I think we're going to face, though, when we, when we talk about this, is if you want to make any differences between parcels in the central business district that currently have a residential use versus parcels that have a business I don't know if you want to get into a situation where you're having a homeowner who's having live music in their backyard until eleven o'clock at night, disrupting the next homeowner over. That makes it a little bit more difficult for the Police Department, but if it were tied to properties where an existing business license is at, that might make it a little bit easier to deal with.
Yeah, so it's sort of an apples-to-apples comparison.
Yes, sir.
And one final question. Mr. Peppers, if, if there's nothing that can be done in regard to the, I guess my question was, if the ordinance were to change or get updated, if you will, could we kind of reach back? That just kind of seems as a slight towards that business owner, if that makes any sense.
Well, I mean, the flip side of that is the business went into business knowing there were already in place, and if they're operating outside the ordinances, that's not something that the city really can turn an eye to, a blind eye to.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I've talked enough tonight, so I have nothing else to report, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.